How we doing this evening, sir?
Testing, testing.
Alright, you're all good.
Thank you.
How we doing?
I'm taking it day by day.
Beautiful evening. I tell you, this morning though is pouring on me.
Well, yeah, it came down pretty good.
Alrighty.
I'm still struggling with this.
What's that?
Still struggling with this broken fractured sternum.
Are you doing a little better? How's the recovery?
I'm moving, but it's slow.
Yeah, they said that you had injured your sternum in that collision.
Fractured it.
Wow. It is doing better though, or is it still bothering you?
At least I can get out of bed.
That's true. Truth to that. Let me just do a quick pass on you.
First getting in bed and out of bed and head to chair and out of chair and...
Check the back end and you're all good.
Uh, anything?
I'm glad there's improvement though.
There's glasses, nothing else.
Nothing in the heat pouches or anything?
Any bother at all? My readers here, if you want to check my blood sugar.
Uh, that's an important piece of equipment for people to have on here elsewhere.
Does that just like read the blood pressure from through the scan?
He's got one of the, no, he's got one of the pad, they put a patch on it.
Oh, tracking, okay.
My mother-in-law's got one. They're a whole lot nicer than poking yourself.
And nothing in this pocket, like right here. Okay, cool deal. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I'm glad that you're doing a little better. I know that's a, that's a tough injury to recover from because there's really nothing that you can do or it's just gonna pain you.
Yeah, they quit wrapping, I guess that creates more problems.
Well, take care.
What are you guys gonna do when it's thirty degrees out here?
Freeze.
Or raining.
We'll be in the lobby.
It's snowing.
It's nice right outside. Stand out here right now, but we'll be in the lobby.
Well, people will be lining up.
I'll put my mittens on.
We'll be here fishing at it by that point.
Thank you.
Oh geez.
We're gonna check with Ari in this and see if they've got a good cell phone section. It's like, no!
They were using their cell, they were radioing?
Well, the guy in the back had a cell to call Akron General and it was, it was their cell phone. I don't know. Well, just like...
Did you, did they release you that night?
Yeah, they did x-rays and a CAT scan and stuff. Nothing was broken, thank God. So send me home with, I, I'm referring to self-medication, the ABCs, right? Advil? Bourbon?
Yeah.
Coffee in the morning.
That's nice.
Not bad.
Works just as good as anything else.
My, my buddy goes, "Well, can I change the B in bourbon to B for beer?" "Yeah, sure."
It's interchangeable.
Not sure a medical professional would agree with that.
Well, it, it's not a narcotic, so I'm not on anything strong. It's just Advil, it's just ibuprofen, so it's a muscle relaxer. What's alcohol? Muscle relaxer.
Depressing.
Yeah, I got it, damn. Yeah. Cut it out, thank you.
We'll see. It'll all be fine. She was, she was okay, just totally upset. She told the police officer it was her fault, her fault, her fault. And she said, "I'm never gonna drive again."
Oh geez.
She was sitting next to me for a minute and I looked over and I said, "That's why they call it an accident."
Yeah, right, yeah.
"All gonna be okay."
Oh, modest, I see. That's, geez. How's your car, your truck?
It's, it's pretty nasty. I, I don't know if they'll be able to fix it or not because of all the airbags that went off.
Oh geez, yeah.
Right now, my truck retails for thirty grand.
Oh, yeah.
So, can you replace it? They might actually fix it because I don't think it damaged the hood and I don't think it damaged the fenders. So I think it just took out the nose, the grill, the, you know, the condenser.
Yeah.
You know, all of those pieces parked in the front.
Geez, that's a good point because, yeah, you're right. The, the, the used cars are so, I mean, it's considered used now, so I mean, it's crazy.
This point. It's crazy pricing. If they wanna give me twenty grand for something that I can't replace, like that's not gonna happen.
No, no, that's, yeah.
I put, I put two thousand dollars in it last weekend. I put performance downpipes, performance catalytic converters and the adapters for that. And then I had the whole thing undercoated. I went to the gas station Wednesday and put a full tank of premium gas because with the new converters on it, I wanted to put, I got a tune, I can put different tunes on it. So I wanted to play around with a tune on it now that I had new converters and put premium gas in. I said, "It's got a full tank of premium gas."
Wow.
It's like, you total this thing, I got a laundry list of stuff.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Well, why not? I mean, they should...
I got a carburetor intake, I got a throttle enhancer.
They should let you get that stuff. I mean, because that's not gonna be replaced, right?
If they total it, then I can't get anything off of it because they're buying the truck as is.
Oh geez.
And sometimes you can buy it back, but then you gotta go through the hassle of removing everything.
I wonder if you could, if they end up like putting it in the salvage yard, if you can find out where they put it.
You could steal it.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, I, I think, honestly, I think they might be able to fix it.
I hope so, man. Geez, that's, that's tough when you get customization and something.
I had a custom grill in it. I had a, I had a Raptor grill in it.
That's, that's for those that are cool.
So, yeah.
And, well, I'm glad you're okay.
I'm okay. Laughing about it now. Just, just sore. Three Advil before the meeting though. I should be good. Six hundred milligrams.
I'm just trying to use the phone and I...
Does that, does that bill make you thirsty?
I do have a question as well, yeah.
I don't know if it's that, but I've been drinking a lot more water and I don't eat a lot and I think it's upsetting my stomach.
I just don't think it's pressing me on.
It makes me very thirsty. I don't know why, but Advil, ibuprofen.
It's always been here because I've been drinking more, I always drink a lot of coffee, but I don't drink a ton of water like I should.
Okay, okay.
Last few days.
Later.
That's a, that's a strange, I don't know, I've not heard of any like side effect listed for ibuprofen for thirst, but um, my brother and I, it makes us real, hey!
Drinking water's not a bad thing.
No, no, it's not.
Well, of course, it's two o'clock, four o'clock, six o'clock.
Good to see you.
You can be too hydrated.
I know, I lost the name thing again. Am I here? Okay. I can't see him on this side. Alright.
Welcome to your new home.
Hey, thanks.
Um, I can pick you up. You can just drop by and make out. Um, yeah, just...
I don't know, I guess the mayor can't.
Six forty-three, no?
The spring I asked if I would do a dedication Wednesday evening.
But I can.
You know where I live?
Uh, dedicated an event.
We live on...
Polatito.
Yeah?
Help sponsor this thing.
Army, right?
Yeah, yeah.
From New York?
Yeah, Wednesday it says.
Eight seventeen, or?
You know where Ed lives?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I knew somebody lived right by you and has a picture.
Okay, wait. What's today? It might fucking be around this week.
This week.
Um, yeah, I'll pick you up. Like, yeah, I told him he'd be there between six thirty and seven.
Just, I wanted to turn that off.
Okay.
Eight seventeen.
Eight seventeen, yeah.
Alright. Cool. That's fun.
It should tape her.
No, he's a nice guy.
Yeah.
I'm still doing my wife's receiving and stuff.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
Yeah.
He's, yeah, he's um, he was my parents' neighbor for years, yeah.
And he still actually does their lawn, uh, lawn care. And he does a really good job.
Drive.
He's been something.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah.
Give me some background as a member of the nation.
Right, right.
Talk about stuff I don't know.
Right, right.
Just wing it, it'll be fine.
Yeah.
You wanna make it important. Put a lot into that.
So, uh, do we have a party or what?
Apparently.
You know. That's what I'm called for, you know, and I'm the nobleman. You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, it's a good point. Um...
I hope he comes to it.
I've heard a couple of different descriptions of what it means that are completely opposite, so who knows? I mean, I don't think it's meant to be helpful, but...
No, no, not at all. Not at all.
But that's, it's not, uh, it's not Robert, it's, that's James Kane.
What, the editor?
The cartoonist.
Oh. Yeah, but he had to be coached by somebody.
Seems like it.
Yeah, and that's um, I um, well, the other thing. I um, you know, another view.
Mr. Giorio, how are you?
David, how are you? I'm good.
Got that for you.
About that.
Yeah.
Negative.
Um, asking what it meant? Like, why people are asking me.
Well.
If they...
I haven't, hi. Haven't had a chance yet to coordinate with my counterpart here, but I'll get that matter taken care of for you.
I think I should.
What did you hear?
Yeah.
Thursday. I don't know the story, but... That'll be good for everybody.
Well...
We got those charts done.
Did you?
Yeah, so I'll email those to you tomorrow. Finish them today. So that'll be good.
For the uh, Zimper, we, yeah.
You know what I mean? Ask the questions, fill in the blanks, then I'm good to go.
That's cool.
A lot of students from Walsh, a lot of them.
They have.
So, we had seventy volunteers.
Wow.
So we have...
Two years ago.
Oh, we did?
For one of our parks.
Do you need a longer one for tonight?
And there was a looper and they called.
Good, I think.
A lot of people there and it was raining. It was...
Dang, getting back.
You'll be in some trouble.
You think so? Oh.
Right.
Really?
You know, that would be a nice.
That would be cool. That would be very nice.
A nice thing.
I think that.
He's here three hours.
Nuh-uh.
He was there.
Very, very courteous of us.
That's not what I heard.
Well, you wouldn't think if you're tired or stressed or something.
Well, maybe.
Charge for a minute?
Just wanna do that till, that way you don't have to worry about it on the whole meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's...
Christina, just sit down.
I can't.
Don't let me forget it.
I know, it's the worst, right? So many of these.
There's some remote areas where people just dump stuff and it just goes all the way down across.
Yeah, I got a TV, I gotta take over.
And I need to come in and get like, like Granicus password reset apparently.
Pay twenty bucks.
So it's telling me.
Well, it's trying to expire because for some reason the next time, you should be able to reset it.
No, Stark State does recycle.
This is an old, it still works.
Like the big?
It's not, it's, it's a big...
Oh, we have to look my...
C and DDR.
Oh, okay.
It still works. Well, we kept it and then we've been storing it basically for fifteen plus years and decided, ah...
Yeah.
They're not coming back in fashion.
No. No. I turned it on with this before.
First name dog, you're like...
That's... A lot of that stuff they don't make like that used to.
I don't know if the goodwill takes sense. It still works, I might.
Or if you wanna cheat, just write down what you wanna set to going on. That never said.
Yeah. I wonder if the Pimvans would take it.
Yeah, that might be a spot.
Cause they...
Well, they took a piano for me.
What are you thinking?
A bad bag. But I was...
Oh geez.
But I was twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We got it.
Yes, probably identical to some of your people.
Okay, cool. So, let's make it...
It must be twelve characters long. Not my room.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday.
I don't, you know, I wanna make it the same as other things. I don't wanna. You know?
Okay.
And I don't know what those are.
No, it's, she, she does...
Thank you.
She's very thorough.
I'll figure it out.
She does go quite a bit into it.
I think we need that.
Seventy-nine ninety-nine, I turned it on.
You can do it.
See what they have. I mean, that's... I'll go see what it says.
That's definitely my one thing I put on there.
That's what I think it is.
Well, now we've got the machine.
Seventy-one?
Really? Wow. That's cooler than I keep in my house.
Is it really?
Are you warm?
Oh, yeah.
No.
I set my house.
Oh. It's seventy-three, it's as low as I guess. But I mean, someone was asking, I thought I'd check. No, it's... You intimidated it.
I just wanted somebody to care, that's all.
You have your ABCs that has its TLC, you know?
There you go. Is this a turbo boat?
Yes.
I don't charge this.
Where's it going?
Swamp dude.
Not me.
So I can get in the mug.
Huh? It wasn't waiting, that would've been Jamie and me in the mail. Someone had to watch the mail. You know, protect him from being there.
I probably didn't look at that area.
Keeps all the passwords. That helps tremendously.
Use Microsoft Authenticator.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, cause that would be, that's incredible here.
Was it?
Microsoft, yeah.
No.
It's like a, you know, authenticated login, but then she can also cross over passwords. It would all be on share, so she can.
Okay. It's good in here now, it's better. No, it does.
Opening this room, I think that you have another email address now.
Me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Uh, I don't really like that. That might be a problem.
Oh, we can get it some time this week or something.
Nobody lives in...
Oh.
It's also not out there anywhere, so.
Gotcha.
Uh, but it exists in the world.
This is my same seat.
I'm gonna forget too.
It's very...
I'm in the same seat.
No, what?
Yes.
With a constant in the universe. The council rotates around you, doesn't it?
I mean, I think so. I think that's exactly what happens. Could've chosen a little year to rotate. Yeah.
Do you need cars?
Yes, yeah. Better text it to me. So, my password is I'm turning into the finger. And that is...
Do you know if, or? Yeah.
It's changing to log in.
Yeah.
And even if my finger's not in the right place, it won't read it, so I gotta, somebody else can't turn it off, so I feel secure.
Yeah, I do too. One more thought. Sure, sure. Okay, we knew it was coming.
We need to go back to Star Trek and they had cell phones in Star Trek, beat me up Scotty. Come on!
They never actually say the phrase, "Beam me up Scotty" in any...
They don't?
I do. I do. Beam me up Scotty. I told you like that.
Can we all agree?
They never said that.
They never actually say the first thing, you know? Just a, it's like Luke, I am your father. He doesn't actually say, "Luke, I am your father."
He doesn't?
No.
Really?
Yes.
Christina!
Jamie!
What's going on?
Are you verifying?
It doesn't say so.
Bad news.
Get her. You know it's true.
Confirmation bias.
You know, the internet only brings up the stuff you want to see.
I didn't have those either.
Huh?
Yeah, I didn't have those either.
No. No, Darth Vader does not say, "Luke, I am your father."
He says, "Beam me up Scotty."
What does he say? "I am your father."
The actual line is, "No, I am your father."
"I am your father."
Because Luke says, "He told me my father is dead," and then Vader replies, "No, I am your father."
Yeah.
You're really a big Star Wars guy.
You're not?
No.
Shocking. What about Star Trek?
Irrational thought that this plug had maybe because I had this...
Beam me up Scotty was never actually...
Really?
Scotty, beam me up. Beam them out there, Scotty.
Energize.
Two of the most famous sci-fi quotes that never actually happened.
The writer's got it wrong.
The writer's got it wrong.
That's exactly right, Dave.
Good, that's quick and good.
So it's nice to have you back.
Thanks, it's nice to be here. I wasn't sure, like, I tested one in math this morning because I was like, next month I have surgery, following Monday.
Really?
Yeah, following Monday will be like, two days after chemo, after my first chemo, and so apparently like days three to five are the worst, so I'm like, I'm not gonna be here again for two weeks, but I'm coming to the...
So you started chemo then?
I started next Friday, on the thirtieth.
Oh, I think it was...
It keeps, oh no, it keeps getting pushed. My mind said I was surgery again last week, like...
No, you backed away?
I'm starting this week, starting this week, yeah, 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 unless I lose my insurance.
That's what we're kind of...
So, this was not supposed to take a year. It was supposed to be like, you know, a week, so...
But you gotta do it right.
Apparently. I mean, I think we did it wrong, so, like, this is not...
It takes, for like the time.
Yeah, you gotta do what you gotta do. Yeah, and I'm just like, oh gosh. Yeah, and I do, I totally...
That's what I would normally say in my line of work, you frequently say, you know, they call, they call the guy who graduated with lights for medical school though, right? So, doctor.
That's true. That's true, but no, mine is like, this does not happen. I'm still surgery, does not happen, this is the one. So, I don't know. I could take very good care of me, he knows me.
Good.
You're successful. Here we are.
Yeah.
So, it's fine. Anyway, so yeah, it's really not too bad.
It's cool.
I wish I was... Yeah, good. Maybe my commute is easy.
And you only have one day, is it?
Four.
Four, yes, can say, isn't like...
Yeah.
But that's what, not one?
No, twenty-one days apart.
Oh, okay.
So, I'll have a good two weeks for sure.
Okay. Right.
They, they, they...
Yeah.
Yeah. Radiation data.
It seems like she did it like so.
Yeah, she made, it's like my cancer, like a lot of people do chemo first to like shrink the cancer, you know?
Hi Christina.
Mr. Bear.
Hi.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Very good.
I understand why they don't do that because if you go around the back, there's a lot of... They can part.
It's all... Exactly.
They could, they could.
Always, it's, I mean, it's...
No.
It's a perfect, it's a little bit perfect for, in both schools, because the buses have several, the buses are going to the same places where everyone else.
I hear you're putting it on.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. I'm up both nights.
Yeah.
And I changed Thursday, I had like a, that's company, and now I dropped, did I change it back? I had two things. They wanted to do it on Thursday, the twenty-second, so I hung on and I go through them. Yeah, and it is on Wednesday, but I've been doing things to it.
No, that's...
Five, six, and seven.
If you'd like to get some more. The retention bond is, there's a...
Oh, you like, oh.
So I have nothing about that.
It goes all the way to... Air, it's by the electrical, right place. It's all around there.
Okay.
And the other one is off.
No, I have the lines, I have the lines thing, which is...
You know, I think, that's...
I think they already got their driver's certificate.
So the bus will...
Okay.
Put there and through the same...
Oh, that's perfect.
And then the same one on show.
Okay, so there's a plaque on the...
Potential chugging.
There's three ways.
That's all I know. Yeah, that's all I know.
But I don't know anything about what it's dedicated to.
Okay. Do you see if I have any kids? Are you present a third to fifth? I'll just see if I can think, if I have it on my phone, if not.
Yeah, I was gonna say that's PK through two. Clermont's three through.
From the five and then that middle school.
I always reverse those for some days.
Well, we are.
Plus I can ask Jessica. Right, that's all.
You need it.
Let's, let's... Yeah, actually, I told Brad they're wrong. When he asked me the other day, I told him they're wrong. I switched to two.
Yeah, she said there was a link in her email.
Is she already or she still has those?
Mr. Diorio, is Catherine going to be here?
Hi.
Hi. Got out of my car and I realized my stuff is in my kitchen.
In your kitchen?
In my kitchen.
That's not good. So how far are you from here?
I live in township, other but is township hall.
Oh, yeah.
So I can either play this back by on, on what you call it and take it from that way or whatever you want.
That happens.
Yeah, this is third time in about thirty-six years I've done this.
You can work off of the recording?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Well, I imagine my surprise when I open them.
Yeah, I know how that goes. Sorry, it happens.
You can use my iPad.
Yeah, well, I'll join in here in a little while, but I hope that. Ah, it's Monday night, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. There's a video link on the bottom. I didn't see it. I didn't see it the first time. I opened up all of the channels. There's a video link that goes to that's played at Dean's service, so I can get some personal.
Penitentiary.
I'm glad you were busy for something.
Did I print out the believe it was the signs that was super long.
We just gonna bounce it over anyway.
Well, yeah.
Wait till it comes back.
It was, I went to hit print. It was a hundred and seventy-three pages. I'm like, no, no, no.
That was mostly the ORC update.
Yeah, yeah. I like to have everything on paper. But I read that.
My computer.
Come on in, Bella. How are you guys? How are you?
Thank you. Thank you.
You all visiting for governor class?
Yeah.
Well, calling up. We'll say hi to you there.
How's it going?
Okay, Mayor Wilder. Nice to see you. You too. What's your name?
Brian.
Hi Brian.
How's Colin?
Hi Colin, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, this is the city council here.
How are you guys doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. What class are you in?
AP government.
AP government?
Yeah.
Very good. Are your assignments to take in when it is?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have a form that you need signed?
Yeah.
How about the president?
Heard someone's kid maybe comes over.
Mr. Stern.
Sure. This government your favorite class?
I go.
One of my favorites.
To be with all of us.
Yeah.
So I'm, we can watch Joey.
Mrs.
So I'm good friends with Mrs. Anthony.
This is.
Yeah. Were either of you on the court that didn't make it? Like, were you in the.
No.
Yeah, but we heard about.
Oh, man.
Do you have a couple football players on it? Yes. Yeah, she called me. She's like, hey, there's maybe some central kids that you're leaving. I was like, well, I know that you should leave that long.
Jamie?
Yeah.
How did you chat?
Oh, with the litter pickup?
Did he find?
Yeah.
No, he was with us when we found. I was the one. There are two people down in the creek and I kind of was trying to help myself to send it because he was one of those fellows. I think he was a little bit disappointed that we weren't prepared with like boots to walk in the creek. So they all went to see John. And he's nice to go. He asked to go this and I was just hoping to escape.
You hear for government class?
Or you're just sitting in?
Oh, really?
Others.
Show this.
Oh, good, yes. Very good. Go to you now, Bucks.
One eleven.
Yeah, one eleven. Okay, sure. Nice to see you.
Well, Farrell, you made it. They couldn't get away with it.
So when do I have to start serving my pen?
For what? What's his pen?
What? Silence out of who? Me? Well, let's just go where I want it to go. Why should I say anything when I'm not a happy camper?
Brad.
I'm sealed that response.
I sent him an email at six o'clock in the morning and he spanked me for it.
Who did?
Why was he awake? I didn't forget to be up.
It was nice. And they go around, so they do this every September. They go around to different areas. So, yes, they won't necessarily be back here. But I guess.
But I didn't see that. I didn't read it.
Oh, I kept the.
I mean, the papers.
So maybe they have a vest.
What'd you say, Josh?
Terrible.
Oh, that's awful.
I can't even like like I tried to, I can't read it through and cancel it. I feel like.
Try to get a college degree before you gotta wait till the year of Tuesday.
That's what's so bad.
Sunday is high school.
Well, and then even that's like a late, like you used to get it. You're like, okay, I'll see my kids thing. And they're like, we don't have enough people to cover. And they just let go a whole new group of people.
But they don't print on Saturday.
Great.
No, yeah, right, yeah.
It's the same newspaper, probably, and it's the same paper.
Well, then they used to like do a lot of support with the chamber and I guess, you know, they're like a part of a thirty paper conglomerate. And we were the only ones to get kind of a cash sponsorship. And they're like, we just can't do it. So remember it used to be the repository grand parade or, yeah.
See, I remember way back when.
Is this for citizenship in the.
That was just a few years ago.
Are you saying wow, Jamie's old?
Wow, God, baby. I'm like, gosh. No, I remember the Cleveland Avenue days.
Old road.
Old road was even better than Cleveland Avenue. Come on.
Really?
No, because they need a turn from Cleveland Avenue, uh, 12th Street. Turn right on Fulmer Road.
To market?
No.
Oh, the other way?
They went the other way down Fulmer to the Hall of Fame.
Oh.
Those were the days.
And that was the party the night before?
From basically 12th Street to, uh, there was a place called the Window, Window Shop or the Window Man right there by the park.
Matt, you were in North Kent. You never came down that far. You were scared. You were scared of us. See, he comes at seven in the morning to fuck clean up.
That's right.
I'll never forget, I went down one night. We had an exchange student from Spain and it was a bright night. So we're like, we should show them. And my dad did not know that we were down there. And I dropped him to my dad. He's like, oh, what are you doing down here? You could turn right around and go right back home. And we looked on 18th Street. So we just had to help the house. You know, like we were close to a market, but it was easy.
What is this?
Wait, what is this already closed for winter again? Okay. I think they gotta go to September.
But I think they were boarded up.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Things were.
Things got a little out of hand.
Neighbors were really.
That's unreal. I was using a pencil.
Just last night. She's in a new wing.
That's something we can do again. Or it's not something I can do.
Hi, good to see you. Good to see you.
Never.
Never experienced an Apple pencil?
Gina? So we're good? Yeah. Because I was talking to Kathy. She said you maybe had to leave and then I have to get down to work. Is that okay? But what time do you normally come in?
It does.
Are you sure? Okay.
I find myself.
Eight fifteen is good. Yeah.
But I didn't.
That's good. Thank you.
On my surface.
Did you get sun yesterday too?
My surface.
I was like.
Little surface I didn't inherit.
Just when I was getting.
Yeah, this one.
It's like. Well, pretty much. Hi, how are you?
I just. Like I have a, a big, a larger size iPad that I use for like playing guitar and whatnot. And I can use it to write on the music.
Did you say you have a guitar?
I think I totally didn't even like, like I didn't even like.
I highly need some things.
And then I caught, yeah, that. And I can't, I can't see here. I'm not hearing. I know.
Okay, ready? Yep. And I'll call it ordered. Meeting of the whole meeting of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. The time is seven PM. Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Mathie?
Here.
Member Wire?
Here.
Member McLeeser?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Stroy?
Here.
Member Volt?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
All right, community and economic development. Derek?
Uh, Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to make a motion to amend our agenda this evening to include item three E. This would be an authorization by council to the administration on emergency to apply for a national reclamation and conservation grant. And the reason we'd like to do this on emergency and for the amendment is we have a September thirty deadline. So I will make that motion.
Okay, I'll second the motion to amend. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. You have in your packets, item three A, which is an ordinance amending chapter seven oh five, our DORA legislation. We are bringing it into line with the Ohio Vice Code. If you go to page nine of your packets, you will find the beginning of the amendments. You will note that these have been, they're highlighted by strikes, if you will. So it should be relatively clear. That would be on pages, pages nine, ten, and eleven. Sections seven oh five oh one, oh two, and oh four. I think I've got it all. Do I not? Ben?
I would have to look.
Okay.
But I will try.
But at any rate, one of the things that we have to do is if you look at the first amendment, which you'll find on page ten. Statute requires that we actually note in our ordinance the boundaries, which that has occurred. If you go to section seven oh five C, you'll notice we've done a little tinkering again to line up with the Ohio Vice Code. This regards our DORA cups were striking plastic and designating them as non-glass. And we've deleted a section. And if you go down to seven oh four B, you'll notice that we have inserted alcohol free. So those are the three changes. Is there any discussion? If there are none, I'll make a motion that we place this on the agenda for a first reading next Monday night.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very good. This is the one that we've all been waiting for anxiously, item three B. We'd like to propose and send to the planning commission. I'll have Dave jump in here in just a second. But Mr. Mathie is proposing, as with the support of the administration, that we introduce a new type of driveway surface. And this is this interlocking grid. It is more environmentally responsive in that it's not, it's not hard surface. It allows rainwater, snow to melt through. Dave, do you want to explain what the background for this request is?
So at the planning commission meeting, no, it was ZD.
ZDA.
ZDA. Yes, thank you for clarifying. There were actually two residents. One was getting a variance to have a higher roof on the garage. Then the other one wanted to build a garage and extend their gravel driveway. Well, under our current ordinances, if you make changes such as adding a garage, you need to have a concrete or an asphalt driveway. So residents in my ward wanted to maintain the gravel driveway they have. It is more period correct to their home. They wanted to maintain the aesthetic look of that. They'd been shopping, talking to contractors that provide this grid setup that you put an aggregate in that keeps it in place. And concern with never having with that in the past has always been that the gravel gets into the street and then it gets into the shores and creates a problem. This grid is what helps keep that gravel in place. So it's actually a third option that we want to go down because the grid is actually being used on very high-end builds. Those grids are being used in large parking lots because it's economically, or economically, it's a little better, but more importantly is for the environment. So instead of all that water from the parking lots, in this case from the long driveways, moving into the sewer system and creating flooding issues, that water soaks through the aggregate into the ground, back where it needs to be in here. So it actually helps in more than one area. So we talked to the residents. Mr. Diorio stepped up right after the meeting and said, let's look at this as an option. Currently our ordinance is decades old. Didn't take that into consideration. And I think that it will add to the environment. It will add to the aesthetics of homes. And it will give individuals options when they're adding garages or other things to their property to be able to put the correct access to the garage. If you haven't seen pictures of it, I wish we could pull up some pictures of what that looks like.
Kinley Museum, Library Museum has a large parking lot that has this particular paper.
It's, it's a grid set and they paint down the.
Yes.
The aggregate.
South side, south side of the library.
So that's nice.
So that's what it looks like in a parking lot.
So what's the grid made of? Is it plastic or is it?
I'm sure it's some type of plastic.
There's all sorts. It can be kind of create some sort of composite.
It's like seeing like one like that.
Would that be similar to a chip and seal?
No.
No.
It's firmable.
Yeah. There's no.
Oh, really?
Yeah, if, depending on the style, you can just. Snow plowing, it might be a different pattern.
Well, and you don't, if you snowplow your gravel driveway, you're pushing.
You're pushing.
Out into the street anyhow. This way the gravel stays at or below the grid.
This also might help us too where we've got some situations where we have recreational vehicle owners who drive trailers or whatever, boats stand up in the front lawn. This gives you a little less expensive option to kind of neaten it up a little bit. I think of a couple down in your neighborhood that have that job. I would, uh, I would call your attention to what would be on page sixteen. There are two, two important elements to note. The first is that if you look at the very top of sixteen, this would be in the second section. But you'll notice in D, with papers, that the director of administration, or excuse me, the director of permits shall review these, A. And B is that the driveway aprons must be concrete, so they can't run it right out to the street. So we think we've got this covered. And as, as Mr. Mathie reminded me of my favorite, favorite words, let's try it.
I did pull that.
Always pull down.
He did. We can always reverse course.
And Mr. Graham was in favor of that too. He was the one that we went to talk to him about the aprons. And Mr. Graham was in favor of that too. He was the one that we went to talk to him about the aprons and make sure that it's family of the streets.
And we probably should note for the record that on the evening of the Z B A meeting, Mr. DiOrio, Mr. DiOrio woke me from a sound slumber to express his enthusiasm for this. So he called right away to see if, uh, we'd be game. So, um, any other questions? So we're going to send this to the planning commission? That's the, that's the plan?
You have to adopt the resolution.
But we've got to adopt it.
Yep.
So, uh, I'll make that motion.
I will second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, uh, item three C is, is the heavy lift. Fortunately, we don't have to work on this one this evening, uh, but you have in your packet, uh, three, three C and three D are companion pieces. Uh, we are going to, the proposal is to repeal chapter eleven fifty-one, our sign ordinance, and replace it, uh, with a new chapter. And you have it stretched out. Patrick, do you want to just touch on this before? And I don't want to belabor because again, we're going to send this on to the planning commission.
Yeah, this is, uh, something that I've been working on since my return here. Uh, the, uh, U S Supreme Court, uh, in this interim had, uh, made a ruling in, uh, Reed versus Tempe, Arizona, that kind of changed the landscape from municipal sign ordinances. So we've been, uh, kind of, you know, holding in abeyance, uh, a strict enforcement of the existing sign code because we did not want to run afoul of this legislation. So we began, uh, a year ago, uh, with a, uh, a committee consisting of the law director, superintendent of permits, myself, counsel clerk, and, uh, code enforcement officers. And with that, you know, getting, uh, information out of the, uh, of the files, of various, uh, records we had regarding sign instances, and then combine that with, uh, a drive-through of the city, uh, over the summer, noting, you know, different examples of new signs that were out there. So with all this information, you know, in, in a year rewrite, we finally got it to a point where we think it's, uh, compliant with, with federal law. And we think that it is something that's, uh, current, that, uh, takes into account existing signs as opposed to signs that exist, you know, were, you know, abundance maybe twenty, thirty years ago, things that are more relevant today. Trying to regulate that and do it in a way that our code enforcement officers will be able to, know in, uh, a readily, uh, responsive manner whether something is in compliance or not, and be able to deal with it on, on the spot. So it's taken a, a, a huge lift to get it here, but we're very excited about it. Uh, I can't wait to get it, uh, in force. And if you forward it over to the planning and we're so fortunate that we can get this thing moving, we could have this in effect perhaps by the first of the year.
Counsel. Question or comments at this juncture? I want to indicate that it's important we do this in tandem. We don't want to repeal it, uh, before we have the new one ready to go. So we'll send them both over. They'll both come back and, uh, move from there. So the first, uh, the first motion is to send the repeal to the planning commission. That's chapter one eleven, fifty, or eleven fifty-one.
So, oh, so move, or did you make the motion?
I have made the motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Question carries.
Then item three D is to send the new chapter to the planning commission. And I will make that motion.
Let's do the, let's motion to postpone further consideration first. So can we have a motion and a second to postpone further consideration of item three C until the planning commission has made a recommendation?
Is that moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we can do the three D. Can I have a motion and a second to send item three D to the planning commission, commission for consideration?
I will make that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to postpone further consideration of item three D until the planning commission has made a recommendation?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, now, we have our amended item, three E, and this was, as I discussed at the time of the motion, uh, this is to authorize on an emergency basis, this is an application through the, through the director of administration for the National Reclamation and Conservation Grant, deadline September thirty. And that is my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, finance and property. Stephanie?
Okay, um, this is for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and it is for a, the cover or the structure for our salt dome. Patrick, do you want to talk about this and the need?
I would just, uh, add that, uh, this is, um, been like the search for the Holy Grail. The councils you've been a part of, you know how far back this goes.
That's really fine.
We've been trying to figure this out for a long time, so I'm glad to be.
Yeah.
On the team that has figured it out.
I wish we figured it out when it was half the price.
I do too. But fortunately, we have the right player personnel, uh, on board, and we were able, we're able to advance this, uh, forward. And, uh, uh, it is at the current location. Uh, so it's a, it's a rebuild of the structure that is there.
Okay. Well, then I move to adopt with an emergency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance rules, John.
All right, it was an ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to the confide ordinances of the city of North Canton. We share, if I understand this right, some of the codes we are using from, uh.
We borrow parts of our traffic and criminal code from the Ohio Vice Code. So once a year, we double check what's changed in the Ohio Vice Code and then update our local ordinances to reflect that.
So that's what we're going to be doing on this. Questions or? So I'll make a motion.
Stroud, seconds.
Can, a motion to?
Adopt the ordinance to approve and adapt. So we have our own codes.
Stroud, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then, um, well, we didn't really have to vote on this, did we not? You said no motion necessary.
This, this one.
This next one.
On this one here, okay. And then a continued discussion of, uh, potential future charter amendment in the event of ordinance forty-seven, twenty twenty-two is adopted by voters relating to the procedures provide, uh, for filing vacancies. That would be like in case of, uh, what, a death of the mayor, then it would go to the, uh, city council president? Was one example, I think.
So our current charter is if the mayor leaves, the council president becomes the mayor. Um, what you all had asked for a draft of was, um, filling vacancies by election instead of by.
Right. Yeah, Derek, I'd explain that well.
Here's again for, for possibly for students, we are asking the voters to increase the terms of the council and the mayor for two to four years. One of the questions that came up is, is the, is it appropriate in early vacancy due to death, resignation, what have you, to have someone, to have someone who is appointed to fill that vacancy essentially get to serve for three years? And the answer is, we don't think so. We, I don't think we do. Uh, I speak for myself. What we, what we're proposing tonight is to place on a future ballot, assuming we get to four years, is to have a provision that requires an election if there are basically just slightly more than two and a half years left in the term. That's what we're after. So in other words, that appointee will have to stand at the next municipal election to hold that office. And then assuming that he or she is elected, they will serve out the remainder of that, that term. So we think this is pretty orderly. And again, it allows the, the voters, citizens to kind of weigh in on that appointment. Particularly for council, what our charter says is when there is a vacancy, the council selects the replacement. Okay? So the council will continue to select the replacement. However, if it occurs with more than two years, that replacement will go onto the ballot. And we will have a municipal election every two years. So it'll fall to that election. The flights.
Do, do we necessarily, let's say, because this will be two ballot issues, one for the mayor and one for council.
That would be the same for everybody.
No.
The draft as written would only impose this for council.
For council.
The mayor, the mayor would stay the same system that it currently.
Mayor would stay the same system.
Okay.
It's in this draft.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So when that person who was appointed then is placed on the ballot in six months, is that for a two-year term?
Or think about it this way. Okay, we're going to have, we're going to go to four-year terms.
Yeah.
All right. So if that vacancy occurs within the first two years minus ninety days, that person is going to go on the ballot. And again, we're running in odd years, so let's assume it's an at-large seat. All right? That person who's filled by appointment, the at-large seat, will get on the ballot with the ward councilman, who'll be up at that next election. And they get the two-year term. They'll finish it out.
Okay.
Okay, does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
Just to give the voters, again, a touch, that frankly is a, is a, is a good. I think it's a good emphasis for, for the council to appoint someone who, uh, is a credible candidate.
So someone can run against that person?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yep. I apologize if I misunderstood last time, but that's not quite the draft that I had legal right. So this draft is based off the township or seat provisions that you pointed out. So if a vacancy occurs in the first two years minus ninety days, it is filled by election at the next election date. There is no appointment until the election. It would be vacant until the election.
No, I can't, that can't be. That cannot be.
Because that's a good point, because you could have, you could essentially go two years without somebody.
We don't want, we don't want a six.
It's not the next municipal, whatever, the next election. So it's not.
It was my understanding, okay. Let's, let's recraft this then. It is the next municipal election.
And there would have to be a provision for appointment because let's say somebody gets hit by a bus the day after they're sworn in, you can't go another two years.
Say you have two members of council who are traveling to Columbus who are killed in an automobile accident. Suddenly, you have only five members. You can conduct no business on emergency.
Right.
During that period. Got to be able to appoint somebody.
Absolutely.
But the weight of it is, person the council appoints has to stand for election in the next municipal election. So we'll get this cleaned up. And I think it's really important that that be explicit. It was my understanding this municipal, but we need the word in there. Good catch. Okay. Mr. DiOrio?
So two, two questions. Uh, just to make sure that I understand that it's clear. Did you say that this is applicable to the office of mayor?
No.
Okay, and why not?
Why? Because the charter is explicit that the president of council become, become the mayor. He becomes the mayor.
But will then that person have to stand for election in the next municipal year?
Not according to this provision.
Why not?
I think it would be unwise for a number of reasons I can articulate later, but I would not do it this off the top of my head.
Okay.
Here, here, let me just, let me just.
Want a choice? This isn't a mandate.
Let me just, let me answer your question this way. Let's assume for the sake of argument that, yeah, you've got a, an individual who's willing to serve as council president. But he may not be willing, if he's at large, to turn around and run right away for mayor having been appointed by council. It may mean that you have people who don't want to serve.
Right.
Sure.
Council president.
Right.
And with all due respect, I happen to believe that this is the more powerful job than the mayor, no offense, mayor. But this is the one that, and I just, I think it's, I would not go down that route at this point. I would, I would not recommend we do it. But, you know, I defer to council.
The second, uh, is, uh, the question on how you refer, uh, you said to the next municipal election.
Yes.
There could be, uh, better wording perhaps when we say the next general municipal election. Because there can be special elections.
Good, good catch.
It does state that the next general election for municipal office of service is probably a good one.
I know what it said, but I know what he said. What he said wasn't what was said, and therefore what was said wasn't said.
Who's on first? But I, that's, that's exactly right. I mean, you know, we've had, for example, we've had municipal specials for EMS. And again, the idea is, is to give people who might be considering running, give them a fair shot at it. So to your point is, if everybody knows that this is the marker date, plus ninety or minus ninety, that keeps it clean.
So what would happen? You know, I think, um, Stephanie said, he's now mandated.
Yeah.
To become mayor.
And run.
But we're saying he wouldn't now have to run.
That's correct.
Right. I agree.
My recommendation would be to not to take it with him.
That would put president and council potentially with a resignation as mayor for a four-year term.
Yes, it would. It could. It could.
Is that fair to the residents?
Fair question. I'm just, I, I'm thinking about how the internal mechanics work selecting a council president with the possibility that they might have to jump into another election. Having spent, you know, particularly for somebody who's run at large, they spent a ton of cash, they got to turn around and run, mount another campaign. Right.
And if they lose and that campaign is made.
They're done.
Yeah.
They're done. That's it. So if you're, if, if we come to somebody and we say, hey, we'd like you to be council president for these reasons, guy says no, or gal.
Of course, at, at that point, you could refuse to run as mayor and run as, on city council for the next election. And mayor would become open. And go back to, and go back to council at the next general municipal election. I think we need to side on the side of residents here. They didn't choose that individual for what could be a three or four-year term to be mayor.
Is there a provision within the council rules or the, uh, the charter that specifies to the council when, at, how long they must take to fill a vacancy of their own membership?
Yes, there is. If council shall fail to fill a vacancy in the office of council member within thirty days from the date of such vacancy occurs, then the power of council to do show shall lapse, and the mayor shall fill it by appointment. Any such appointment to president or vice president may be. Any such appointment to president or vice president may be from among all the members of council. Any appointment of a council member representing ward shall be filled from that ward.
What section is that?
5.05, about halfway down paragraph 2.
Could the mayor appoint himself to fill the vacancies? If you're long, I'm stressed into this position, I did not want to accept it, so I will appoint myself to fill the vacancy. In the meantime, you will have elected a new president of council.
It's messy.
Yeah, it is.
That's if it goes 30 days, but... That's a good question. I'm not aware that vacancies were frozen, so they're going through the days. But, you know, if you had one that might occur pre-holiday, pre-Christmas, you'd burn through that calendar pretty quick. You'd have to come back in off recess, but...
What?
Questions could get people into a meeting between January 15th and 30th.
Do we know what other cities?
That's on the city and their charter.
It's, they're either going to be charter, or if they're, if they're home rule like Canton, the central committee of the respective parties will need to be appointed. But because we're home rule, that authority is vested with the charter. Hey, if you want to go back, we have plenty of time on this one.
Yeah.
We want to go back and write in the mayor. I don't have an objection, but I think it's important that, that as we inch toward November, that we be able to signal the voters the fact that we've considered, certainly on the council side, how to replace someone early in a four-year term.
I think, I think if we take the mayor in the same direction, that if the council president doesn't want to remain as mayor, in the next general election, there won't be an election for the council position that was filled, and then there would be an election for the mayor.
Not necessarily.
Well, if it was 90 days before...
Well, but it could have been, well, yeah, I guess it would be, yeah, I guess it would be regardless of such, it's just whether or not somebody was appointed and they're doing an expired term.
If the mayor listens and the mayor goes, all right, for whatever reason, the council president immediately is going to move up, resign, A, and B, become the mayor. Not leave a vacancy...
And on council.
On council.
As a president. The vice president would have moved up to president.
Will leave a vacancy on council.
Correct. And then both of them would be in the next general election if we go that round, for the mayor and the position that was filled by council that was vacated. They would both come up, so that the residents would then, once again, have an opportunity to vote for the mayor and vote for council. The council president may say, I want to go back to council, I'm not running for mayor again.
Then he'd have to run.
He would have to run. But at least then the voters get a chance to vote at the earliest possible time.
Right.
Here's something that I thought, I, I guess I think of more strongly when it's in regards to the mayor, is 90 days long enough to mount, actually mount a credible campaign? Are you really giving these people, if we're the office of mayor? I mean, I view that as being a little more intensive than council.
The answer to your question is, that 90 days approximates the period between the election and the filing deadline.
Right.
So that's, so everybody who files late, files, you know, middle of August, they got 90 days to mount a campaign. So that's no break with what currently exists under law.
Okay.
Say what? Okay, I think the marching orders are this, then, we're going to wrap this into the mayor, we're going to clean up the language to make sure that everybody understands it's, it's the next municipal election.
The next regularly scheduled, the general municipal election.
Yes. You can actually call it the November election, because that's the only election that we have.
So, so...
Well, we, other than special, but it is a...
Well, in theory, you could have members of the judiciary, the Canton Municipal Court, run in primaries, as had been the case of late, but there used to be a day when that occurred, and that necessitated then...
A primary.
A primary in the City of North Canton in May.
Okay, fine, we got it, we got it.
I will work with Wayne to get...
Okay, we know, we know where we're headed. So what started out as a relatively simple ideas and all kind of a question complex, we still have a little, little better language.
Under normal circumstances, if elected by the voters in November, these are two staggered elections. Council is, mayor would be first, and then council would be second, aren't they alternating?
No.
So one of...
We're going to, remember, we're going to run two flights. What, the first flight will be the ward councilman for four-year term, two years later, then the at-large guy, so the mayor are going to go. Flip it, I'm sorry. But it's going to be, it's going to be, we're going to have, everybody's running a four-year term, but they're, they're two flights separated by two years.
Right.
So things are staggered.
They're staggered.
They're staggered, okay.
And of course, the advantage there is it avoids a complete washout.
Right, you don't end up with potentially all seven members of council...
Paul Newby's...
Changing in one single election.
Right.
If we may, it allows us continuity of council year over year without having that risk of the entire council being replaced. I think it would really put the city at a disadvantage if the entire council changed in one election, and they were all learning the process and what needed to happen. I think administration would struggle to get things through, it would be a difficult time. Could it happen? Yes. Will it happen? We don't know. But we should plan for that.
Just one, one final thought. If you, if you have a vacancy in the mayor's office and you've got a council president who really does not want to be mayor, he could resign as council president, the vice president could become council president and then move up and assume that...
Or they could say no.
Or they could say no.
Right.
So you might have to play some musical chairs if, to get somebody to that election, but if that means that...
Would work in a planned, in a planned succession, succession, where the mayor may step down due to a, an illness that is forthcoming, forecasting, doesn't want to do those things. But it, it wouldn't work in a sudden loss, in an automobile accident, as you described. Upon mayor's passing, the president of council would automatically become the mayor.
That's true. That is true.
Okay, any other scenarios where we could each other...
Mayor, or water. We'll be having, we'll be having a sort of pre-planning session with Carlo and Sons, and you are no longer to mow your lawn.
I like the gait of throw tactics.
All right.
Rough.
It's pretty rough.
Okay, there's no motion needed for the...
That's going to commit, that's going to commit...
I will work with Loyal for draft now.
Okay, moving on to formerly rubbish utilities, committee...
I don't know how I can top the previous discussion about our, each of our own demises, but this one is pretty exciting. So this was taking a look at a CDPG grant for the water line replacement down on Valley Drive. So Patrick, do you have anything that you'd like to fill in on this?
I wanted to say that this was a forecasted budgeted project. The engineer was successful in getting a, a grant for $395,000, so we would like to move forward with it.
And this, if I remember correctly, it is going to be towards the tail end of next year, correct?
Yeah. They, they award their money kind of mid-cycle, kind of on the calendar year.
Perfect, so we do have a little bit of time before this will happen, but, yeah. I've moved that we adopt this, or put this on the agenda, excuse me, as an emergency, thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourn.
All righty.
Oh. We're done? Are you, are you done?
We are?
Okay.
We're done? Yeah, we got a lot of great points on deciding the two-year term. The thing is, what happens if the option of an interim candidate, like you said, when they get go, that person...
Or it's the store.
You mentioned it, they have a party center, when they brought party... It's probably not... Oh, yeah. There was a lot of party... Yeah. The vice... Sort of our experience. Yeah. It's a damn good place we have.
Patrick, you're doing it.